All right, thank you.
All right, good evening, everyone. It's Wednesday, September 25th at 5:30. You and I would like to call the Personal and Finance Committee to order. Clerk Torado, I believe you have some comments to make before the meeting begins.
Good afternoon, members of the public. For audio quality, we will be muting everyone not speaking by default to maintain good audio quality for council and yourselves. If you would like to speak during the meeting, during the public portion, please submit your request in the chat. Directions to do so will be listed in the chat shortly. We ask that you provide your full name and address, as those are required for all speakers at in-person council meetings. If you have any questions, please use the link provided in the team's chat to submit them. Additionally, if you are called on to speak, please provide your details in the following format. My name is full name, and I live at address. And you will then be given five minutes to speak. Please ensure that you unmute yourself prior to giving your remarks. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Would you mind calling the roll call for the committee, please?
Committee Chair Nowkowsky.
Present.
Councilmember Vice Chair Warner. Councilmember Lee. Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Present.
Councilmember White. Citizen Member Angela Smith. Citizen Member Ross Deal. We have a quorum.
Thank you so much. Okay, so this evening, we're going to be hearing the budget presentation from the clerk's office, the mayor's office, council, diversity and inclusion, and the CRB, the Citizen Review Board. The human rights budget presentation has been moved to October 3rd, and that's going to be just prior to the council working session. This is the seventh of 10 meetings for the 2025 budget. The next meeting is tomorrow, Thursday, September 26th at 5:30 here in the council chambers. Additional information for the 2025 budget can be found on the City's Build the Budget website, and the South Bend Common Council website has information and links for the 2025 budget, as well as links to submit questions for each budget meeting. The council cannot increase the budget, fund programs, or create expense items for city projects or approve contracts, but we can decrease the budget. After each presentation this evening is presented, two questions may be asked by council members, and if time permits, additional questions may be asked. Then we will open the meeting to the public, where we also will have two questions from each member of the public that can be asked during the public portion of the meeting. If there are additional questions from members of the public or council members, please submit those questions to Clerk Torado, who will in turn direct those questions to our city controller or the appropriate department. The responses will be placed on our website. Clerk Torado will also ensure all responses will be placed in the budget folder so that residents can access that information. After the public portion is completed, council members may make an statement. Please keep your questions germane to the presentation and maintain a decorum that is respectful to everyone. A maximum of five minutes will be allotted for the public and/or council members to ask their two questions. So I see Ms. Torado there. If you would like to begin, please.
Good afternoon, council. Bianca Torado, City Clerk with offices on the fourth floor of this building. I stand before you today to present my budget hearing, my budget presentation. I'll start with our mission statement. The purpose of our office is to ensure integrity and accuracy of City Clerk, of City Records, and serve as the liaison between the common council, city administration, and the South Bend residents, and fostering those relationships for the common good regarding the work that we do. I am the administrative arm to you all, the common council, and I do that with pride by ensuring that we are efficient in what we do, we are honest in what we do, and that we keep those relationships fostering so that that helps us better do our job. And we fulfill our mission through the following actions: empowering our community and advocating for an open and transparent government governance, which is ensuring that we have a process and a procedure, and that there are checks and balances to those processes and procedures. Here I have provided an organizational chart. This is how our office functions. As you can see, the executive arm, Mayor, Common Council, City Clerk. I have my chief deputy, Chief of Staff, my Deputy Director of Policy, my Executive Assistant, Director of Special Projects, and my public intern, my public relations intern that serves and reports directly to me. Just going into detail about the details of each of these positions, I, the City Clerk, maintain order within our city government. And my Chief of Staff is my operations, who is my right hand. She can do anything that I can do. As you know, that is Ms. Ellie over there. My Deputy Director of Policy, who is Matthew Neal, serves as all policy and legislation. So he is the legislative pipeline. So he ensures that bills are filed appropriately, they are processed, and any of the back and forth that needs to happen to ensure that residents have what they need and administration has what they need to file their bills. He performs that. My Executive Assistant, Director of Special Projects, which is Sam, he oversees all the minutes and technologies in any of the miscellaneous special projects that happen in the office. In year one of our administration, we took some time to do some auditing and just figure out, you know, what it is that we wanted to, how we wanted to serve our residents and what we already do. And some of our 2025 goals and continuing efforts is really just being a forward-facing office to our residents and administration and you all, and keeping all of our processes and procedures up to date. In year one of our cleanup, we have, we have seen many, many things that have needed some changes. And so I've worked with the staff to ensure that they are trained up so that they can perform those duties. One thing that is important is establishing relationships with partners in the community. And it's very difficult to do that when the staff is in the office. And so I've created a professional development initiative with the staff, which is Fireside Chats, and inviting our partners from the community into the office to learn more about what we do and how we serve in building those relationships. And so next, we're going to take a look at our, what we've accomplished this year. So the mighty Hot Topic, which is our minutes project. On day one, we did an audit, and we found that there were 226 past minutes that just needed to be completed. And so we worked with a software vendor called Minute Solutions that completed those 2022 and 2023 council meeting minutes and committee meeting minutes. And so during the audit, Minute Solutions just drafted the minutes. They did not complete them. So they sent the complete draft, and then our staff went in to ensure that they were accurate, working with council members who were a part of council in the last administration to ensure that it was accurate and up to date, and then followed the finishing process to ensure that they were online. And so I'm happy to say, I've said this before, that they are completed and they're online. So I'm happy to walk you through some of that to at a later date if you would like me to, if you want to see exactly where they are. But they are all online where they should be. So we are very excited, very happy to complete that project. And I would like to commend my staff for the hard work, and you all, council, for your support during that project. Some of the filings to date, we've had three special resolutions, 10 special proclamations. The difference between special resolutions and proclamations, for some of you that don't know, is resolutions are read on the floor, are special resolutions, and special proclamations are read in the community. So that's the difference between special proclamations and special resolutions. We filed and processed 29 resolutions, and we have filed and processed 59 ordinances. That number will grow tremendously as we finish the rest of the year. But this is year-to-date. I'm happy to announce that we, we have a new logo, and it was really important that the logo represented the work that we do in the office and the services we provide. And so after staring hours at the common council logo and the city flag, I combined them together. And so in 2025, we'll be rolling out some storytelling pieces of that new initiative. But I did want to share that with you because we're very excited about that project. So regarding our budget changes for 2025, we have, we only, I'm going to share with you some of the increases. So we did a slight increase in supplies just due to the need, which is 36.8%. And other services and charges, there's a slight increase there, 6.7% due to just cleaning needs and some of the vendors that we work with and the supplies that we need and services has increased their budget due to demand supply. And our printing and supplies, our printing and advertising increased 10.5% just due to how we advertise. So this is our publication and advertising. When we advertise public hearing ads and we certify all the bills that are passed, we need to pay to process those. And so those fees have slightly changed. So that, before you, you can see why those, it has increased. The budget, total budget has increased 3.7%. And I'll share more with you about the salaries in my presentation on the 14th. But we are asking for no, no salary increases, just the normal citywide 3%. And so our 25, 2025 proposed budget, just as you can see in comparison to the rest of the city departments. And at this time, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you so much for the, the presentation, Clerk Torado. Mr. Deal, you have a question?
Yes, thank you, thank you for the presentation. Just really two questions in one. Number one, are you, do you feel like you, your office is where you need to be in terms of technology? And if not, what, what goals do you have for that?
That is a very good question, and I appreciate that question. So we, we are not where we want to be technology-wise, but we will, we will get there with the new city hall. So there, I'm working with our IT department to ensure that those requests are, and the needs of the council are being met. There's lots of technology ideas that we want to incorporate, but those things cost. And so we just want to, across the board, ensure that whatever we purchase and design works for our residents, works for the council, and definitely works for administration as well.
Hey, any other questions from council members or people on the committee?
Couple.
Ms. Karen White?
Thank you for your presentation, very clear and well-presented. I was getting ready to ask that question too, in regards to technology, as we prepare to move into the new city hall and looking at not only the technology, but having the other types of resources that you need in order to be, you know, at the point that we would like all of our offices that will be moving to the new city hall. And so again, I would encourage you, as we continue to move in that direction, maybe start, if you have not already done so, start a list of things that you feel that would be needed. And I think the same would hold true for the council as well, especially from a technology perspective. So thank you for that. And I, I like the concept of the fireside chats with the city clerk staff. How do you envision that?
So we did one, we did one last quarter where we invited a member of the community. And so we, I put up a fake fire. So that kind of like, it's like the, you know, the YouTube screen where you can put a fire on there. And so we had pastries and coffee. And then I think it was really important to provide a storytelling piece to my staff about why we do the work that we do. Like, what's the history of the clerk's office? There's so much history in the office and how, I mean, yes, this is my first term being City Clerk, but I've been a part of the City Clerk's office since 2017, and how it has grown since then. And so it was important, because I brought in a whole new staff, for them to understand why we do the work that we do, because we're constantly going and going. And this was a way for me to pour back into my staff so that they can like say, oh, this makes sense. This is why we do what we do. It's sometimes hard when I'm, sometimes I think it's better for someone else to say it. Because I'm always saying like, this is why we do what we do. But it makes a difference when we have our community partners come in that know the importance of the clerk's office and the work that we do, to share that. And I, it's important for, it's important to me for them to hear that.
Thank you. Councilmember Tomas Morgan, do you have any questions? Councilmember Lee?
I don't have a question. Well, I do have a statement, so. Thank you for your presentation, very easy to follow. Thank you for the hard work of your staff, knowing coming into this, this, this term, this administration, and the amount of work from previous administration having to get it done and getting it done and knocking it out. I, I call Matt the, the, Matt the Minutes Maniac. But to be able to have a clerk's office that gets things done and keep us abreast on all of it, how, how will you guys continue to keep us in tune with what's going on in, in the city so that we, we have it on our calendar?
So that is mostly us just finding out where, are you talking about like events? Or just like, but we do have some plans for a master calendar. And this has been an ongoing, an ongoing conversation of ensuring that you all know what's happening in the community. So we will continue to work with the mayor's office. We will continue to work with our community partners to ensure that there are events on the calendar in a timely fashion. I know there have been some things that have come across like, this is tomorrow, you, you know, we need to be there. So we are working hard. We know that that is a challenge, but we're working on that.
That was one of the things in the past, and you guys have done a great job of keeping us informed what's going on. Thank you.
We're going to get back to that.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Yeah, I've, I've said this before, but in your presentation, first of all, thank you for very clear and, clear presentation and beautiful PowerPoint slides. I, I just, I just want to reiterate the immense work you and your staff did to catch us up on minutes. You know, this, this should be emphasized, 211. 211 sets of minutes, meetings over two years that were not done, and your staff within less than nine months completed. And so that was work that was not happening that your new office had to take up and, and completed, and completed well. So I, again, I've said this before when, when I announced the 40-some minutes that I had to approve for three committees that I chair. But I just want to thank you for that very critical, important work.
Okay, any other questions? I see nobody else? Okay. Okay, we have one online. Okay, then I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing portion of this meeting. I see Ms. Sue Kissam, looks like she has her hand up. If you could state your name and address for the record, please?
Sue Kessel, 4022 Kennedy Drive. I agree, the slides are beautiful design. Good job on the logo, that looks very nice and very professional. I really like that. That history about the clerk's office was really interesting. It'd be great to have that on your website. I'd be really interested in that. The master calendar idea, that sounds great. That would be really helpful to not only council, but the public. So yes, just like St. Joe County has on their website, that's helpful. Also with St. Joe County, they have a listserv where people can sign up to get minutes. I'd love to see you have that kind of technology. Maybe look at implementing or budgeting for that and see how St. Joe County does it, because it's so easy when I want to see that. So we have a good model right in the same building. And my two questions were, how are you going to use AI to increase the performance of your office and to make it easier for the public? And then the second one is, how can we make committee meeting minutes better? Maybe with technology or whatever? So those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you for your questions. Would you like to respond, Clerk Torado?
Yes, I can answer those.
Thank you.
So as far as AI performance, I mean, AI performance technology is so new. And there are guidelines on how we should incorporate that in local government. And for me, in my office, I want to be sure I'm very clear about those guidelines in ensuring that we are using AI properly. And so we are looking into this, we are working with IT, we are exploring. And so we're just waiting for the right plan and the right time to introduce some of those initiatives. And the other question regarding how to make community meetings better, are you, Sue, are you referring to the technology piece of community meetings?
Committee meetings.
Committee meetings, yes. So.
Or community meetings, but in specific committee meetings to make those more useful. Thank you.
Thank you. So when it comes to off-site council committee meetings, it's very difficult because what it, the amount that we pay for the technology here, for the sound and the setup, is not where we go. And so we are, whenever we, we understand that we are, we need to be inclusive, we need to be accessible. And so we are working with IT to determine the best setup and use the best technology possible when bringing community, when bringing committee meetings out into the community. And so Matthew and I are, we're trying to work on a plan. We feel like we found a plan, but it's really going to take some investment in the type of equipment that we will probably need to, to bring out in that. But it's, we're getting there.
Okay, thank you so much. I do not see anybody else, is that correct, Matthew? I didn't see anybody else. Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing portion for this presentation. Bring it back here to our council members and committee members. Any final statements? I would just like to say, Clerk Torado, you've been wonderful to work with. Your office is a pretty tight ship, and we sure appreciate the work that you do for us council members here.
My pleasure. If you have any questions, you know where to find me.
Yes, we do, and we do a lot.
Thank you.
Okay, so we are going to move on. The next presentation we have here is the mayor's office budget. I see we have Ally here. If you can state your name and address for the record.
Sure, good evening, council. I'm Ally Dulz Lane, Deputy Chief of Staff to the Mayor. Office is on the 14th floor of this building. So our budget is, is very simple and kind of boring. So like the clerk's office, we're a very small team. We have only eight staff members, including the mayor. So as you can see, this is our org chart. We have an administrative assistant, who's the front-facing person of our office. The first face you see when you walk in, she deals with a lot of the public. We have our executive assistant, who's also the mayor's scheduler. She also deals with a lot of the public. She's kind of like the backup to the administrative assistant. We have the Director of Communication that deals with all of the city's communications and media. Besides the Fire Department, Police Department, and Public Works has their own marketing person as well. The Director of Communications manages all media requests to the city. And then we have the Director of Community Outreach. She also, she liaises a lot with community members across the city, plans different events, and holds different meetings with community leaders. We also have a project manager, and she manages some of our more complex issues with, with residents, concerns with residents. She manages other public meetings and, and other things as well. So, and then the Chiefs of Staff manage the, the departments and the office management. So as you can see, the only increase in our budget this year is the salaries. We are doing the standard across-the-board 3% raise for all salary caps. Other than that, like every other department you've seen during these hearings, we have an increase in our fringe benefit costs. Every other cost in our department, every other budget line in our department has a 0% increase. It stays the same this year. I'd be happy to answer any questions about this budget before we move on to the Community Police Review Board, which I'm also presenting. But that's really our budget in a nutshell. All we're, all we're adding is the 3% to the cap of our positions.
Okay, council members, committee members, any questions in reference to the mayor's office budget? Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
I was, thank you for your presentation. I was curious, I know the mayor's office has interns. So are those salaries included in, in the mayor's office salary and wages as well?
So our interns have the city's minimum wage. And so the city's minimum wage, as, as far as discussed, is not increasing this year. And so the intern budget does not, is not increasing commiserate to that, commiserate to that. We're just, the intern budget is the same as it's been. Yeah. And our interns aren't paid unless they decide to opt. And our interns aren't paid unless they decide to opt for college credit.
Thanks.
Okay. Any other questions? I'm seeing none. Then I'm going to go ahead and move on to the public hearing portion. Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak in reference to the mayor's office budget? And I do not see anyone. Is that correct, Matthew? Okay. So I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing on that. Bring it back to the committee and the council members. Any questions? Any statements?
Thank you for your presentation.
Yep. Thank you for the presentation.
The next slide is the police review budget. Do you want to do that now or do you want me to come back?
No, you could go ahead and do that one now since you already have it on that slide. Okay, it's all yours.
Okay. So this budget, you'll see that it's going up thirty eight point nine percent. You'll also see that the total budget is a hundred and thirty nine thousand ninety five dollars. So this is a smaller budget. There's one full-time employee in this office, but there is a whole board that is now seated. So that is where you see the increases in professional services, education and training, travel, other services and charges and supplies. That is really all due to the board being seated and the need for the operational expenses of the board and also to make sure that the board members are, are educated and they have the resources they need to be, to know what they need to know for, as board members. As you can see, the five point eight percent increase on the salaries and wages, that's just due to, obviously, there's only one employee included in that, in the three percent increase. And then that also includes the, the residency incentive bonus. And so that's why it looks different because you, you can notice since there's only one employee that it looks like there's a five point eight percent increase, but the cap is just going up three percent. If you have any other questions, I can try to answer them on this budget.
Okay. Thank you so much for presenting that budget as well. Committee members, council members, any questions? Council member White?
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. I noticed that it's only one staff in the citizen review board. As we move forward, are you looking at having any administrative support for this position and also for the board as well? And if so, where would that come from?
Yeah, we're hoping that in, in the future, when the, the board, when the police review board office is in the same building as the Human Rights Commission in, in their new space in the Leighton Building, we hope that we'll be able to perhaps share an administrative assistant with both of those departments so that we won't have to add a whole new full-time staff member. But that's just, that's just one of the thoughts for how we could provide administrative assistance to the board.
I'm smiling because sometimes when you do that sharing, you know, but at least, you know, there's some thought given to that because I do know that some of the board members, they've been going through training and really have enjoyed, you know, that part of the process as well.
Yeah, we'll certainly explore the need as we go forward.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions? Council member Lee?
Yes. Hey, um, thank you for the presentation and thank you for all that, that is represented here today. How, how much training will the board need in order to be able to function?
That's a great question. I can answer what I can, and I can also have Pastor Charles follow up with you as well. One of the things that we tried to implement with the board members was to have them all go through the citizens' police academy. So that would be a baseline training for them to understand how the police department functions. And I believe that the requirement will be for all of the board members to, to go through that training. Other than that, there are a couple of other proposed trainings, conferences and things of that sort for the board members. Pastor Charles has a lot of, a lot of training materials already created that, you know, we can, we can share with you if you'd like to see those.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you so much. I'm going to go to the public hearing portion now. And I see we have one person. There's no one in the chamber, it looks like, wishing to speak. So we have one person online. That's Ms. Sue Kissam. If you could state your name and address for the record, please?
Sue Kissam, 4022 Kennedy Drive. Um, I'm looking at this. I don't, I'm questioning the lower half of the spreadsheet. Four thousand in travel. What's involved in other services and charges for fifty five hundred? That seems high. Repairs and maintenance for three hundred. What exactly would be repaired and maintained and supplies four thousand dollars? I'd love to see detail on that. It just, I'm for, I don't know. It just doesn't make sense to me to those amounts. So I, I'd like further detail on exactly why all those charges are being added. I, I just seems high. So if I could get detail on that, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I'm sure that's not information that you have that's readily available to you at this time.
I don't have that information readily available, but we can share some of the ideas that we have. These, these kinds of, these levels of budget are pretty commensurate with other departments of this size for travel to conferences, for education, for trainings and things of that sort.
And, and I would agree. That's, it's pretty similar to all the other budgets that we've seen that allow a certain amount for travel, supplies, postage. They're going to be moving to a new location. So I, I agree with you on that point. But regardless, we will, if you could ensure that.
Absolutely.
Ms. Kissam, please, does that relate to her?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you so much. I'm going to close the public hearing portion. I believe I do not see anybody else. Is that correct, Matthew, before I move on? Okay. I just want to always double check myself. So we're going to close the public hearing portion and bring it back to the council. Is there any statements? Any questions? No? Okay. Seeing none. Thank you so much for both of your presentations this evening.
Thank you so much.
I think we're going to move on to the diversity and inclusion budget presentation next.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Happy to be before you this evening to present our proposed budget for 2025.
And did you state your name and address for me?
Yes, my name is Cynthia Simmons Taylor, and my office is on the fourteenth floor of the county city building.
Thank you so much.
So what we want to talk about in brief tonight is our department, and we stand for integrity, diversity, compliance, inclusion, equity, fidelity and integrity. We also want to share with you some of our 2024 accomplishments, and some of our projected activities or strategies for 2025, and then of course, our 2025 budget. So the Office of Diversity Compliance and Inclusion Team consists of myself as the officer of diversity, compliance and inclusion, the manager of the inclusion project, Bianca Jones, and we have a new hire that is coming aboard October seventh as our contract compliance administrator. I've already given you our mission in those six words. A lot can be said about those six words. But our purpose is to create a more inclusive and equitable business environment to ensure fair access to government contracts for small and diverse businesses that we don't expect to stay, stay, stay small forever, to enhance cultural competencies within the city's workforce, to build strong, sustainable growth opportunities for MBEs and WBEs, and that would be minority business enterprises as well as women business enterprises. So what we do is we run supplier diversity, and that is based on the disparity study that the city of South Bend did, based on 2015 through 2019 data. The suggestion is always that you do a disparity study between five and seven years. And so when you look at the end of that being 2019, next year, we're due for another disparity study. We also have a small business assistance suite. And then the, we're helping with the internal workforce cultural competency that is in progress in conjunction with our human resources department. So just a little bit about supplier diversity. We're focused on increase, increasing the participation of the minority business enterprises and/or the women business enterprises in city contracts. We want to provide guidance and resource to help these businesses navigate procurement processes and also set goals for prime contractors to engage more with diverse subcontractors. I'm so proud to say that the city of South Bend, after seeing the results of the disparity study, knew that we needed to raise the bar in how we do business and in whom we do business with. And so we started with the Board of Public Works projects, which are the Meteor projects, and we set goals on those, on some of those projects. And those goals, we expect to be met by anyone that's bidding on the contract. So there is a goal of a percentage of each contract that should be given to your minority business enterprises as well as your women business enterprises. And just because a company is the low bidder, if they are not responsive and responsible in meeting those goals, that does not necessarily mean that they're going to get the contract because we do expect the goals to be met. We are reasonable and we do know that sometimes that is a challenge. But challenges, if you flip it over, are opportunities. A little bit about our small business assistance suite. This is the equitable piece, really, of ODI. And we aim to assist small and diverse businesses in becoming certified to compete for city contracts. I do have a IPC board, and the only spend that really matters to that board is the certified spend. We provide business development assistance with legal advice from an attorney that will tell you, if you're an aspiring business owner, how to best establish your business. And if you already are a business owner, they are making sure that you are on track, you are, you have your business situated properly and legally. Accounting, which we teach, and we also offer six months free of QuickBooks. Coaching, business coaching, which helps with business plans and et cetera. And we'll be adding a marketing piece in 2025 because we find that many of the small diverse businesses just really haven't marketed themselves the way that they need to. So we want to assist in that area. We do this by offering workshops and support to help businesses to grow in this very competitive market. So our workforce reimagined, the internal workforce cultural competency allows us to assist with focusing on building a culturally competent and inclusive workforce within the city's department, making sure that everyone who wants to be promoted, if you will, are provided with the skills or upskilled to be able to have a career path and then a sense of belonging. We provide training, resources and strategies to improve diversity and inclusion, and that's under executive order number zero one dash twenty sixteen. Also aiming to support departments in assessing and implementing diversity and inclusion strategies. Some of our accomplishments in 2024 is that we were able to partner with many amazing local organizations to develop a business ecosystem. Many times, businesses may not be able to work with the city of South Bend, but we want to turn them to where there is opportunity. And so we are building this ecosystem. And I have a slide that just kind of tells you who those partners are. We host workshops for adults and youth. We identify and increase the number of certified firms the city does business with. Most of you know that I took this assignment in the middle of, I think, right around the end of June of twenty three. And there were no workflow processes, and so we're making sure that we create those so that nobody ever has to start again from ground zero, if you will. The certified firms that had been identified when I took this job mid 2023 were seventeen, and I believe we're at about fifty five or sixty now. These are just some of the partnerships where we've been invited to participate as presenters and just happy to make the connections and the engagement because what we're expecting from prime contractors and subcontractors is that they have relationship. It takes relationship in order to be utilized much of the time. So we saw a need for workshops on certification. With only seventeen certified at the time we took over, we took it upon ourselves to have cohorts and actually walk through the certification process all the way up to and including submitting the documents. After the documents have been submitted, it takes between forty five and ninety days for the state to either approve you, ask you questions or deny you. But you can just see a picture of the attendance in the certification workshops. It's really a, a good room to be in. It is offered in a hybrid fashion. And so not only do you have all of those people in the room over at TRC seeking certification, but we have anywhere from ten to fifteen online also doing the same thing. And sometimes it is helpful for them. I just wanted to say, when we offer these classes, because many small businesses, the owners are working, and so they can't take off and, you know, they lose money if they take off and come in during the middle of the day. So our first two cohorts were held from five thirty until seven o'clock. The cohort that we're in now, we're getting ready to go into the third of four sessions is held on Saturday mornings from ten to twelve. Wanted to talk just a little bit about, I, I said earlier, you know, we have issues, but if you flip that over, there are opportunities. And so in order to grow our tradespeople in this area to work on public works projects, we have to reach out to the youth. And so we did that this year with the Thought Leadership Conference. We had a youth in, in trades, and they were able to actually hands-on, see what masonry was like, electricity, plumbing and et cetera, those types of trades. Trends. These are the positions that are on the, that are on an uptick. These are what we need more of. If you are familiar with individuals who would like an opportunity, please have them reach out to us. So moving the needle forward to inclusion, to date, we've assisted ten businesses who were successfully able to achieve their IDOA certification, and they continue to trickle in. I think the last one we got was from the first cohort. And so what we tell them is don't faint. We have to get through to the finish line so that we can get you certified. We've also identified fifty plus businesses that the city has done business with who could qualify as MBEs or WBEs and so, for certification. And so we have reached out to them to try to encourage them to come and be, become certified. And so we have reached out to them to try to encourage them to come and be, uh, become certified. And then there have been 42 businesses this year with assistance through our business assistance suite. Wanted to just give you a comparison of utilization. Um, it's not moving as quickly as I would like it to. Next slide. However, um, you see from 2022, we had 24 MBEs, WBEs and double minority MBE and WBE. And in 23, that went to 29 and then in 24 to date, we have 30. We still have others in the pipeline that we expect, uh, to be utilized. Um, we have spent with public works projects 50 plus, um, with non, there have been 60, 50 plus non-certified businesses that have also got spend who are women-owned businesses or minority-owned businesses. Just kind of wanted to give you an idea of from 22 to 23. And then on the next page, it will be 24, just showing you the city's total spend and what we were able to, um, spend with minority and or women-owned enterprises. So as you can see, we are, uh, progressing. And this is, uh, 2024. Now I do want to say this, there are some exclusions to the city spend. So you look at, oh, the city's spending $115 million. There are a list of items, next slide, please. Uh, go back a slide, please. Thank you. So the list on the right are those spends that are ineligible. Um, we don't expect the city to, uh, have women or minority-owned spends within our postage and shipping and salaries and wages and utilities. Those types of things have been, uh, taken out of the spend. Next slide, please. So our projected activities and strategy, um, is business development. We revamped, uh, our business development program, uh, and took a full-service approach versus the one or two vouchers that individuals were offered in the past. We're looking at what do they need? They may need three, they may need one. Supplier diversity, we're assisting the MWBEs that can potentially do business with our city by hosting the workshops and education sessions and engaging them with prime, uh, contractors. Uh, this is, uh, what we're planning to do more of in 25 than in 24. Teaching them how to bid, understanding their capability, resources for project pricing, supplemental support for insurance and bonding requirements, assistance in certification support with both public and private certifying agencies, and hosting supplier diversity summits and networking events. Also, there's an opportunity through the Mentor to Protege Program. Uh, this program is focused on businesses that are aspiring to work on government contracts and public works projects and matchmaking them with mentors who are already experts in these industries. Uh, this will assist that their business in growth and in scaling. And then the internal cultural competency training assistance, which will encompass internal cultural inclusive competency to ensure that city employees have a sense of belonging. Now to the meat of the thing. My budget. I, I believe it's a pretty simple budget. Um, we have, uh, salaries that are increasing in 25. And the, the thing that is increasing is that we have always budgeted for an intern and have not utilized one. We will be utilizing an intern actually at the end of 24 and also in 25. Supplies, uh, we ran out of them, uh, this year. And so we know that we need more than a thousand dollars. So you'll see that, uh, we went from 1,000, uh, to 2,500. Education and training stays the same. Other services and charges, which include memberships that we have with IDOA and ACHA and WeBank, because you cannot just get access to minority and women-owned businesses if you're not a part of these organizations. That also gives you, um, discounts on the conferences. Printing and advertising, uh, we have to get the word out there. There are still many individuals that I speak to who have no idea that the city of South Bend has a department like ours. Professional services is actually going up by 25%, but if you look at 2022, we're still recovering. And travel stays the same. Nearing the end, belonging, inclusion, diversity and equity. In order to continue to promote programs and policies that enhance diversity, compliance, equity and inclusion within the district, we will continue to ensure that all residents have a voice, feel valued and have a sense of belonging. Thank you.
Well, thank you for such a thorough presentation. I appreciate that. Um, we're going to come back, uh, to our council members, committee members. Any questions for, uh, Ms. Simmons? Please, Ms. Sophia.
Yes, I have a couple of questions. I thank you for that presentation and it was well done, but I still have a couple of questions. So I was listening to you say about the, um, getting the word out. So have you thought about, um, brochures in the churches? Sending a brochure to the pastors, you know, through email or something so that, um, they can get it into the churches? Because like you say, there's this program, there's a lot of people that don't know about it. Okay? And then I would like to know how many, how many black-owned businesses have finished this project this year, women or men?
I may have that with me. I may have to get back with you on that.
Oh, okay. That'd be fine. And I would also like to know, do you, um, do you plan on, um, continuing with a, a large portion of minority, uh, women this year? Have you, how do they know to get into this program?
We have to put the word out. We, we just have to advertise. And, um, you know, I, we have talked about what you just stated as a suggestion, getting the brochures out there, getting radio ads. Um, we are out in the public. When there's, uh, anything that the city is doing, we have our table up uh, with our swag and just talking to individuals about the opportunities that we, uh, are affording them.
Well, I thank you for your presentation because this is something that I've been really wanting to hear. And so in anything that I can do to help you get this word out, I will do that because we need to get this out to, uh, minority-owned businesses. And we need to get this out to women that might be seeking to go into business and they don't know about these programs. Okay? So, thank you.
Absolutely.
Council member Lee?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Cynthia, for your presentation. Um, I, it was something I wanted, I was looking at. The Office of Diversity, Compliance and Inclusion. And it says the total eligible spend that slide, can you, can you? I didn't quite understand that. If, if you could kind of help me understand that a little better. It's, it's the Office of Diversity, Compliance, Inclusion, moving the needle forward and inclusion. There we go. Back. Go back. Next one. That one.
I'm gonna bring my numbers person up.
Okay, thank you.
To assist with this. She's been, uh, filling in the gap while we haven't had a contract compliance administrator.
Hi, my name is Bianca Jones. I am over at the Building Department.
Just, just, uh, just, uh, you know, I was looking at, I was trying to understand the numbers and I, I said, I'm just gonna ask because I'm not afraid to ask questions.
Okay, um, so on 2022, so that very top line that says the city of South Bend's total eligible spend, um, that is what the city has spent that is eligible. So that list on the second page, it shows the not-eligible document or spend. Those items have been excluded. So that was that spin there. Now, when we get down to the goal-setting project slash program plan administration for administrator, that situation is really about the public work. So that PW just stands for Public Works Projects that has goals on those. Um, so overall, the city had spent 700,000, over 700,000 for public works projects that year, um, on projects with goals. Um, and of that, only 6.63% went to M's and W's. Um, and those who had no goals associated, so all other departments spent about 5 million and we, uh, had about 4.33% engagement. So what that just means is that those non-certified, non-goals, those that spin there just really encompasses, okay, that's an opportunity for us to reach out to those businesses who've been doing business with the city that are minority and women-owned, um, to try to get them into our certified category. Um, and it just kind of paints a picture of, okay, so the following year for 2023, the spend did increase from, for the city to 152 million, point, well, 152.9 million. Um, and then the goal-setting for the public works projects, only 100 or 1 million, 1.7 million went to those goal projects. And so 1.1% is what was spent with those minority and women-owned businesses.
All right. Thank you. That's.
That's of the city's total spend.
Of the total.
Total spend. All of the spends are not eligible for goals. All of the public works jobs are not eligible for goals. The disparity study outlined, um, uh, excuse me, utilization. Who's out there? Capacity. That's how we set the goals. If there's nobody out there that's a plumber, we can't set a goal on that because we know there's nobody out there. Our marketplace is the entire state of Indiana and Debarian County, Michigan. Um, I wanted to just point something out on that slide. When you see the non-goal-setting or program administration, uh, at over 5 million, those are all other departments. Right now, we're only holding public works accountable to meet goals. So we're actually doing really well in all other departments because they are spending over $5 million, uh, with women and or, uh, minority-owned businesses.
Right.
And 4.33%.
That's what I, I was, I was, was looking at and wanting to get a better understanding of. You know, because a lot of times people, people feel like, you know, minority businesses, we, the city needs to do more businesses with, more business with minority, um, businesses, but it becomes a challenge or, or. Tell us about the challenge of, of connecting the minority, finding the minority business, huh? Oh, okay. Because people have a demand to, 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 to say we, the city needs to do more with minorities.
Exactly, exactly.
Can you talk about that challenge of finding them, connecting them and all of that?
Challenge is finding them. Okay? Out of all the African-Americans or other ethnicities of color in our area, we're talking about 60 that are certified. We have gone as far as to pull records from the Building Department who keeps a checkmark on who's minority and who's woman. Um, so that we have reached out to them to try to wet their palate to want to be certified because they're licensed.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that is our challenge. And how we deal with that challenge is we have to grow skilled tradespeople. We have to grow them. That's why we're reaching into the middle school and into the high school. You know, to get them involved, to show them hands-on, you know, what it could be like. And we're going to do more of that. We've got, um, one of our board members, uh, Murray. You know, he's the skilled trades guru.
That's right.
And so, but it's, it's, that's the challenge. But you know, a challenge is also an opportunity. And so it, you know, it's just, if you find them, send them to me. Cause we're looking, we're driving down the street and we see signs on the side of trucks and we're wondering, who are you owned by? So I mean, we're, you know, we're having to turn over and beat the bushes, really. And so when people say that we need to do more business, uh, with minorities, they have to be able to be found.
Yeah, making the presence known that they're actively in their business. Cause there's several people that do handyman work and are licensed. They're doing the work all day. They're working in their business and that's the only thing that they do, but they have never started a business. It's just trade-off. Hey, I'm, I'll come over and I'll fix that for you and then that's it. But this is actually a profitable business that they're engaged in and they haven't transferred into that yet. So that's another challenge that we're experiencing when it comes specifically to the skilled trades and public work projects.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay. President McBride, you had a question?
Thank you. Uh, one of the questions of many, but I, I'll limit them today. I know, um, back in 18, when I came on council, that was one of the first, uh, questions was where are all the minorities? And why aren't we working with hiring, partnering with them? Um, and so I am excited to see that the move, the needle is moving along a little bit, but it definitely needs to, uh, grow stronger. I know how your work ethic is. So I'm confident that we will, uh, grow to a, another level of inclusion. One of the questions, and I recall a few years ago, um, talking about the business suites and the different loans that the city offers, found out that there were challenges like to the application process at the time. There were challenges with still banking institutions, um, denying, uh, some of the minorities. And so I didn't know if there were any other barriers that, um, is, is it something with the, and I know the application sometimes necessarily is not the administrative piece, but the state level or the federal level. Um, there have also been a few minorities who have reached out to me that are certified. But since they don't live in the city, was told that they could not be a part of. And, but they're licensed in the state.
That's inaccurate.
And so there are few, um, that I know that were discouraged, um, some years ago. So we can reach back at, uh, some of them to look at that. So I'm, I'm pleased to hear you say that we could probably move forward with some of those. Um, you mentioned the diversity study. I think I would want to welcome you back, um, to the council to give us an update because I want to know where we are, uh, with some of the numbers with what, I believe years ago, when the diversity study came back to council, there were some low-hanging fruit of things that we could have done or could do immediately. And I think some of those things may have happened, but I think we need to continue to look at that and get an update to see where we are. So I welcome you back with that. But one of my, the biggest thing is I know it's difficult with the application process, but I didn't know why people do not want to get certified. So is it because of them not being able to pass the test or is it too challenging or do you not know?
It's not a test, but it can be cumbersome. And that's why we are now sitting with them, basically. Holding your hand and walking you through the process.
Okay.
The website, the state's website is just not user, as user-friendly as it could be. And so I do understand why an individual would say, forget it. And so we're going to continue to hold the certifying sessions, um, because we're successful at it. And so, um, you know, we just have to continue to plunge forward and, uh, you know, uh, telling someone that because telling someone that because they don't live in South Bend, they're not eligible, I'm not really sure where that came from. It certainly was before me. But I have done a lot of work cleaning up and trying to rebuild relationship. Because there are multiple minority businesses that think that the city of South Bend does not care. And I am hard-set on letting them know that we care. We're here and we care and we'll help you. But in terms of, I think another barrier is the insurance and bond requirement and the cost of that. And the program plan and the ordinance does provide that we should be able to assist. I just do not have any bond money in ODI, but community investment, I think, has been helping, you know, the shortfall. Yeah, just trying to do the best that we can to, you know, again, this is what my twenty-eighth year with the city of South Bend and everywhere I go, I have to rebuild a relationship and let them know there's somebody here. There's many people here that care and that are watching. And so we're going to continue to move forward.
Thank you. Councilmember Ophelia?
Yes, one last question. Is there a way that I can get a list of the minority-owned business? Do you have, do you have a way of, what do you, have you been keeping track of?
So we have
Own what business that's minority?
So if they're certified, we have a list of all of the minority-owned businesses and women-owned businesses because some of the minorities are women, so they're double minorities. We have a list of them. And we are compiling a list of all others, of all others, because that's the golden question. Where's the list? So yes, we do have a list, but we're still building it because there's many more out there.
So is it possible to get one of those? A list, okay.
Sure.
Would you send that to me, please? Thank you.
Any other questions from Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Thank you so much, Ms. Simmons, for your presentation. I get the pleasure monthly to meet with Ms. Simmons and her staff as a member of the IPC Board with Mr. Murray out there. Just, I was really grateful to hear some of the questions that were asked previously because I think it points to some of the challenges, you know, that we've had and, and the good work that the office is doing. And so, and point one is when we, we did the revisions to this ordinance, you know, the, the million-dollar question was always going to be availability and, and building the capacity. So, you know, trying to help businesses go to scale so they can compete for contracts is the million-dollar challenge. And so, and finding those businesses, as Ms. Simmons said. But the other thing that and Ms. Simmons mentioned this in her comments, that has been a priority of the IPC Board is the, is upping the certifications. Because technically, it, it's really, that's the spend that counts. And so when, and so in, in some ways, it's a low-hanging fruit, but it's more dif- difficult, you know, than it appears. And so we, we know and do business with minority women-owned businesses, but they're not certified. And so they don't count in the spend, you know? And so that's, that's what's really hard. The, the numbers are actually higher, but they're not certified. And so it's, it's kind of an ongoing frustration, you know? I know it is really like, we just gotta get them certified. You know, and so, so I really appreciate the work of your staff, really kind of walking them through that process because that's so important for overall numbers. And I'm also just going to say that in your slide here, you mentioned ten businesses who are successfully able to achieve certification, but in fact, there's many more in the queue because you've touched more. And so anyway, I just wanted you to be able to see. I, I wanted to be able to point that out, you know, that it's not
Yes. In fact, the last one that trickled in was from the first cohort, which was in March. And they can't wait to call and say, guess what? I'm certified. Although we are able to look, to see, you know, who's certified and who's not.
Yeah.
We let them deliver that news. Just one other thing I would want to say, I think it was Mr. Lee regarding challenges. Challenges is that we're, we're requiring and requesting change. So we have prime contractors who are used to doing business with certain companies. And so what we are saying to them is you have to give the MWBEs a chance. Because if you continue to go to the company you always went to, we're going to have the same results. And so that's why building relationship is so important. And we're looking at planning a, I don't know, a party? A, a relationship party so that primes will be there, subs will be there with their capability study. They can give their business card. You can put a face with a name. We have to build relationship. Yeah, we have to build relationship.
Any other questions? Councilmember White, do you have any questions?
Fine.
Okay.
Good job.
Thank you.
Good job.
Okay, I, I don't see anyone online, so I'm going to go ahead and go to the public hearing portion. And I do not see anybody in the chamber, but I do see one person online and that's Sue Kissam. If you could state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Sue Kissam, 422 Kennedy Drive. I have some comments and, and a couple of questions. Some of the thoughts, it's Steel Warehouse, they have apprenticeships and internships that go unfilled every year, which would be a great pipeline for minorities. The Chamber also has a list of companies that offer internships. In particular, Steel Warehouse for the trades is, is what I'm saying. They can't get people to, to apply or fill those. So my thought is, your office could probably reach out to the Chamber and the companies to see and get a list of trade apprenticeships and internships that go unfilled. And maybe you have people that could fill them. I, a thought that came to mind was dreams, having a desk or office or something at the Dream Center. And I didn't see anything on the budget about grants coming in. It seems like this office would be a great one for getting federal or state grants to offset the taxpayer load. On my questions, I'm thinking it would be, since there's only sixty that you mentioned certified, it'd be great to see a spreadsheet of those sixty and over the years, like a five-year period, what the dollar number is that they were given from the South Bend spend. So that you can see an actual dollar total of those sixty that you have and how much is being given to each one. That would be a nice metric to have. And then I, I was curious why the professional services were so high. Could you detail why the professional services seems higher than what I'd expect? Thank you.
Our business assistance suite is paid through the professional services. So the third party that we utilize to train and teach, the bookkeeping, the lawyers are paid out of that amount. The six months of QuickBooks is paid out of that amount. The business coaches, there's somebody I'm missing. But that is what, what is paid out of this amount. And so actually, we're, we're, we're shy. We're shy, actually. Because if you look back at 2022, you will see that we were at a hundred and fifty-six thousand, six hundred and eighty-nine dollars. At one point, there was no staff in the office of the diversity and inclusion. And so because I did not have the B-suite, I gave that money back to be a good steward. And so we got that suite back in January after I did that. And so we're still struggling to try to get back where we were. So it's actually, I understand that a hundred thousand dollars looks like a lot, but any consultant that we might get, such as someone to do the cultural competency for the city employees is all paid out of the professional services.
Oh, thank you for that explanation. And, and maybe in the future, you could maybe detail that a little more to, for better understanding.
Sure, sure. I appreciate the suggestions that you had. They were great.
Okay, seeing no one further, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to all of our council members. If anybody has a statement they would like to say before we move on to our final presentation, I'd like to say thank you for bringing the presentation to us. And I am happy to hear about the trades. I mean, there's a shortage of coming down the pipe, the plumbers, electricians. I mean, they're retiring quicker, I think, than, and I think Murray could attest to that, than when it seems like what we could even fill. So I think that's important for our students to know that you don't have to go into all of that college debt. You can go into a trades, they have apprenticeship programs, and you can, you know, build generational wealth being a plumber, being an electrician, being a laborer. A number of different options that are in the trades, and we have some strong unions here in our city as well that provide those opportunities. So I think that it's wonderful to get that message out there and not strap people with thousands and thousands of dollars of debt as well. So, but thank you so much for your presentation. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, so our last and final presentation is our council budget by Ms. President Sharon McBride. And then for anybody that missed it earlier, Human Rights Division, that was moved to the October third meeting. So this is our last presentation.
Good evening.
Good evening.
As President of the South Bend Common Council, it's my pleasure to present the Common Council's 2025 budget. This proposal will reflect our objectives, priorities, and goals for 2025. As you know, the Common Council plays a crucial role in the governance and development of the city. Here's some key responsibilities and roles of the Common Council that I'll point out. Number one, legislation, of course, we enact local laws, ordinances, and resolutions that govern our city. The budget approval, one of the most significant responsibilities, is reviewing and approving the city's budget. Constituent services, council members meet with residents to discuss their concerns and issues. They function as a bridge between the community and the city government. policymaking, the council set policies that guide the city's growth and development. And lastly, community engagement. Encouraging and facilitating civic engagement is a key role. This includes organizing and participating in community events, forums, and public hearings. These responsibilities ensure that the Common Council plays a vital role in shaping the future of our South Bend, our community, and making a better place for all of our residents to live. Now, before I delve into the 2025 budget proposal, I would like to take a moment to reflect on some of our significant accomplishments that we have achieved in 2024. Some are public safety. We successfully increased the staffing of levels of our police and fire departments and ensure quicker response times. And you'll see it throughout the presentation when we move forward, but I'll pause for a moment. We have also increased staffing levels for our fire departments, ensure quicker response times, and enhance community safety. Our community development initiatives. Our efforts in neighborhood housing saw the redevelopment of several vacant buildings transforming them into affordable housing units for all of our residents, from low income to moderate to even market rate. Economic growth, we supported local businesses through various grants and incentives, leading to the creation of new jobs and a boost in our local economy. Infrastructure improvements. Major roads, repairs, and upgrades were completed, improving transportation and connectivity across the city. Environmental sustainability, we launched new green initiatives, including expanding our recycling program and investing in renewable energy projects. These accomplishments were made possible through the collaborative efforts of our council members, the administration, city employees, and the active participation of our community. As we move forward, we aim to build on these successes and continue to make South Bend a thriving and inclusive city for all. Now we'll go to the slides that you can see. You can move forward. Thank you. When we talk about neighborhoods, I did have a handout with the ARP dollars that we had allocated a few years ago. And if you look at the allocation, and I have a different slide, I actually have the one that's replicated from Mr. Bowers because it's more user-friendly and readable for me for the presentation. The total amount that was allocated was fifty-eight million dollars. And of that total spent was fifty-two million, five hundred thousand as of September fifth. So the council had played a major role in making sure when we talked about the goals of housing and mental health and homelessness and improving our roads and alleys and demolition of buildings. There was a lot of goals that we had a few years ago that have been carried out and we continue to do so. So I'm proud that the council, every year when we put our goals down, administration takes a look at them and prioritize our goals with administration's goals. So with some of the affordable housing, of course, we are continuing to build mixed-use housing throughout our city. There's always still more room. One of the major goals that I know some of us, me in particular as a council, and I believe Karen White and Pastor Lee, we have worked hard with the Housing Authority as well. And we would want to continue to make sure that that project, although they are federally funded, there are a lot of local residents that were displaced. So the city did make a commitment to work with the Housing Authority as well to see that we have some units back online or we support them in that effort. So with a lot of our low-income families that affect a lot of our black and brown communities, I would definitely want to see this as a top priority with the council to continue to see in our housing stock. As well as, I have to brag on 466 Works, that's in the third district, that continues to build. And also in partnership with Riley High School and the work that they're doing with the trades of building houses in neighborhoods. And I also know that Cross Community now have been doing a great job and also Mr. Richardson. So we have a lot of different landlords that have stood, stood up and are filling vacant lots and doing a lot of infield throughout all sides of towns. We're going to continue to work with residential neighborhoods and also our residential neighborhood committee to make sure that the plans are completed and are implemented and moving forward to what the residents of South Bend said that they wanted and make sure that we are following up with those tasks. Also, we talked about the quality of life ordinances, about code enforcement, the nuisance ordinances, the alleys. And all of our quality of life, I've tasked Councilwoman White of revisiting the quality of life ordinances so we could make sure that we are in compliance and can upgrade for our residents. And of course, connectivity with upgrades of parks and trails. We see that we're still doing the work. Administration have been doing a fine job throughout the city with that. Next slide, please. Safe community. We have pushed and fought with the Police Department and proud that they are fully staffed and with the administration supporting that and, and leading the way on that charge. We have to just make sure that we maintain and retain officers. And I believe we've been doing a good job with that with the negotiation. been doing a good job with that, with the negotiations and also with the cost of living incentive for them to live in the city of South Bend. Also want to focus back on not only our community partnership. The homelessness project, I am glad that we are about to move forward with the permanent supportive housing project that the council have supported. Also, the funding that we have provided for the Mental Health Crisis Center. And some of the things that we have talked about with the home repairs program, and I'm looking at some of the monies, there was a total of $2.5 million that was allocated and spent. Also, the home buying assistance and financing, there was $2.5 million allocated and spent, and additional $1 million for the home buying assistance program. Also, the neighborhood infrastructure was $2.5 million, and it's about 90% allocated. And then looking at the comprehensive plan, the land bank startup, demolitions of vacant buildings was $4 million, and we're glad we finally got druries down and a lot of other, I know, fun effects is in the pipeline as well. Neighborhood recovery grants of $200,000 for neighborhood main streets, $500,000, and athletic courts. I know we did a lot of upgrades to our courts throughout the city with pickleball and also with some of the repairs and basketball courts. So we're excited to know that even, you know, the LaSalle Park, Charles Black Center is being renovated, as well as the MLK Center. So as we continue to grow with our green spaces and small businesses, as Ms. Simmons so diligently talked about, we want to make sure that we are continuing to work with our youth as well. So infrastructure, we talked about it, neighbors, that's all they want is traffic calming and to make sure that they are safe and we all have a good quality of life throughout the city. So we continue to increase our allocations with curbs and sidewalks and street improvements and the Wi-Fi expansion. The next slide. The economic opportunities, I won't rehash that, as we talked about the minority women in business and also with the youth, with early childhood development through United Way. We also have the job training and trades that were touched upon and also broke around today on the Youth Service Bureau. So we're targeting and also making sure that we're trying to tap into our youth opportunities as well. Next slide. The Youth Advisory Council, I know this is Ms. White's baby. We have been having a Youth Advisory Council for several years, and every year it seems like they grow and get more active, and they are our future leaders. And this is probably like none other that we have seen as council, for them to come out to the community and attend events and attend workshops that are put on. So very proud to have the Youth Council active and under our council leadership and learning about local government as well. Next slide. So the 2025 proposed budget at a glance. You look at the detailed budget, it's not too much of a shift that we increased this year for the budget. The increases are reflected in the salaries and fringes, which is a standard 3% cost of levy that was requested to follow along with the administration throughout the city. And also, you would see our education and training did increase again as council have been more active of going back to the conferences of AIM and different leadership conferences that we attend every year. And if you look at the other services and charges, I know that was talked about, a lot of that had with our cleaning services this year and also with IT maintenance and upkeep was most of that. Other than that, we are holding steady. I know our IT costs, someone had a question about that today, and the general budget is about $71,000 that's allocated for the council, for the IT budget. It doesn't increase the cost because it is in the general fund budget. So if you would like to know more about that, you can ask me, and we can get you further details about it. We're also looking forward to moving into our new space next year at the new city. So I'm sure we will be having additional appropriation as we will have to support our transition over to the new building and the new space. And also, there's also going to be an increase of appropriation because we're going to trial with the police tapes, so that will also do it, have an increased cost in our budget as well. So those are the main focus points that I see with the 2025 budget. And this is just the overall summary of the administration's budget that was proposed. And with that, I will turn to Council Chair, see if there's questions.
Okay. Thank you so much, President McBride, for that presentation. Do we have any questions from the council members?
Thank you, President McBride. I just, would you be able to send us the PowerPoint?
Absolutely.
For this, I don't think.
Ellie can send it to you as we speak.
Great. If we got it, I'm sorry, I didn't see it in advance.
No, I made a, it was sent out and I made probably another adjustment before I got here, so you can get it soon. That's the only question you have for me?
Yeah.
I'm off the hook. Yes.
Ms. White, you have a question?
President McBride, as we move forward and not only preparing for the new City Hall, but as a council, we do know, if we look at the different priorities that the council members have indicated, there's a lot of continuity with that. And so it will be helpful towards the end of this coming year, just kind of look at some of the progress and what were some of the challenges as we prepare for 2025.
I appreciate that.
I can help you with that, too.
I appreciate it.
But I think it's always, you know, the evaluation piece is very important. We set these goals and they are all important, but what are the measurable outcomes as well?
That would be great. We can do a look back. It'd be great.
Ms. Ophelia Rogers?
Thank you for the report.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Lee?
Thank you for the presentation, President McBride. When we look at travel expenses and from year to year, what happens when we don't utilize all of those, those dollars? Where do they go?
If the funds are not encumbered for us to earmark for the following year, they are all returned back into the general fund.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing no other questions here in the chair, I'm going to open it up to the public meeting. I see no one here present wishing to speak. I do see one person with their hand up, Ms. Sue Kissam. I know this is kind of redundant, but you do have to state your name and address for the record.
Yes, I realize that. Sue Kissam, 402 Kennedy Drive. Just, I'm glad to see the police trial finally coming up after all these years. I am curious how much to date has been spent on this police tape issue, both settlements and lawyer costs and all that. That would be interesting to know if, if that's available. I had a thought about grants to offset taxpayer dollars. I'm wondering if there couldn't be a grant received to do the youth council. Kudos to Ms. White, that's always wonderful. And maybe we could get some sort of grant to even offset that, that $3,000, or maybe even expand it with a grant, maybe get grants for some of the housing initiatives, things like that, so that we're not paying locally as much. I am curious on the AIM training and as to how many of the council members, if they got the AIM training on the budget part of it, I'd be curious on that. Thank you.
I'm sorry, that was asking how many council went to AIM? Is that what the question was?
Yeah, and if the AIM training was about the budget or something else, but in particular, did you guys receive training on municipal budgets? I was just curious about that.
Yes, yes. Every council person.
Because Sherry mentioned that she had not gone or gotten training on the budget.
Yes, she, she is welcome to go, and I don't believe that she took her opportunity. But I will speak to council about the various trainings. But everyone that have been, since I've been on council, and new onboarding that has been the process, so thank you for that.
Okay, I see no one else online or virtually with their hand up, no one in the chamber, so I'm going to close the public meeting. Any final questions, comments? If not, this will conclude our budget meetings. We're almost there, yay.
Thank you.
So thank you, everyone, for coming and participating. Appreciate it. And at this time, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you so much. See you all tomorrow. Stay tuned. Tomorrow.